Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I almost felt like I was in church there. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. This is the Baltimore City Council Recreation and Parks Committee. I am Councilmember Carl Stuggs. I'm the Chair of the Committee. To my far left is Councilman Eric Costello, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee. To my immediate left—
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. And representing Council District 11. To my immediate left is Councilman William Pete Welch, who represents District 9 and is the lead sponsor on this particular bill that we're here to—here this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, sir. For the purpose of calling on representatives from the Police Department, Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Finance, the Law Department, the dirt bike riding community, and neighborhoods impacted by dirt bike riding, to join with the City Council in a series of work sessions to create a viable plan for addressing the inappropriate operation of dirt bikes in Baltimore's neighborhoods by creating a world-class dirt bike park in Baltimore City. As stated in the resolution, this is a series of meetings, so there will be no final recommendation to the full Council after this evening's meeting. However, this committee intends to send to the full Council its recommendations regarding the matter before us. We have agency reports with us. The Department of Recreation and Parks favorable. The Police Department has comments, and the Police Department is here. Rather than read those comments, I will ask Representative from the Police Department, Captain Milton Corbett, to speak in a moment. The Department of Finance has comments. I don't see anyone from Finance yet, but if they don't come in, I will read their comments. And then the City Solicitor is favorable also in terms of the legality of the resolution. Bob Wall of Wreckin' Parks is with us this afternoon. He is our Director of all things Recreation. I said that forgetting his exact title, but that's close enough, right? Captain Milton Corbett, I mentioned, from the Police Department is with us. Angela Gibson, the Honorable Angela Gibson from the Mayor's Office is also with us this evening, and Law Department is also represented. My colleague, Councilman Welch, is the lead sponsor. I will ask him now to bring comments as he sees fit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to do better. We need to provide a venue for our young people who ride dirt bikes. We need to keep them safe, as well as our communities safe, and we need to de-vilify what we call an urban sport. Recently, I was invited to events by the AMA, American Motorcycle Association, to watch competitions at our Royal Farms Arena, and I was amazed at the level of expertise our four and five-year-olds had riding similar bikes on dirt tracks with quite a few turns and jumps in them. By building a dirt bike park, we take our children, our young people, off the streets of Baltimore. We provide a safe environment, an environment where not only can they ride, but in the terms of the AMA, seek sponsorships that will actually pay for their equipment and all the other things that go along with competitive dirt bike riding. I hope that as we proceed through this hearing, that I have suggestions from the general public, because the general public is affected most by our dirt bike riders in Baltimore City. And I don't expect all dirt bike riders to ride in a dirt bike park when we build it. There are some that will continue to ride in the streets of Baltimore, but if we can save one child, then we've done our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I actually did go to the motocross event at the Baltimore Arena, the Royal Farm Arena, with the Councilmen, because I am aware that all across the country, that motocross is a major sport. And of course, in Baltimore, we only refer to the dirt bikes. The exact same bike often is used in this sport called motocross, which is competitive, which has both monetary and otherwise prizes, where the riders wear helmets, wear uniforms, attended by thousands of spectators. It is a legitimate sport, but it's done in a manner which is safe, which is fun, competitive, exciting, and—so I'm going to speak to my own bias. I don't think we need to criminalize an activity. I remember, it wasn't so long ago, that we were trying to criminalize skateboarding. Matter of fact, we were criminalizing skateboarding as much as two years ago, until Stephanie Murdock, who is staffed to Mary Pat Clark, worked for 10 years to raise the money. It's amazing story, Stephanie's story is, to raise the money for the skateboard park that is at—in Hamden, Roosevelt Recreation Center. And we need others like that. And believe it or not, people said, you know, you can build the park for the skateboarders, but they're not going to come. They're going to stay on the street. But guess what? That skateboard park is filled every day with skateboarders who have decided to use that because it is built for them and so that they can do the tricks and the turns and learning. Joined by Councilman Brandon Scott, a member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Councilman, representing the 2nd District of Baltimore City. Anyway, so that's my bias, is to stop criminalizing these younger persons who are enjoying themselves. I want them off the street, as you do. I want them not aggravating and even, in some cases, terrorizing motorists or pedestrians as you do. But I don't think we should continue to ignore the fact that this is something that's legitimate in most of the United States, and in matter of fact, is seen as a very desirable entertainment entity. I do—well, I'm going to move to the Police Department, and I'm going to ask Captain Corbett if he would speak to the Police Department's comments of this particular bill. I need you to use the microphone. You could go to the podium, please. And even though I did introduce you, if you would, for the record, reintroduce yourself and the Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Captain Milton Corbett. I'm the Commander of the Special Operations Section of the Baltimore Police Department. In the Special Operations Section, I am in charge of the Traffic Section of Baltimore, and that unit investigate all serious and fatal accidents. First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity, for having us here to address this challenge, and potentially looking forward and working with each and everyone here in reference to it. But I just want to share a few facts with you. In 2015, the city had three fatalities, in reference to the dirt bikes. We had three dirt bike operators that was killed while operating the dirt bikes. Currently, in 2016, we've already had four to five serious accidents in reference to these dirt bikes. Unfortunately, the Department is left with trying to do enforcement. As you may or may not know, we do not have a chase policy here in Baltimore. So when these dirt bikes begin to surround the citizen cars or create havoc on the streets of Baltimore, we often get called to handle those types of things, but by the time we arrive, the bikes either have departed or have left. And some of them want you to chase them, but of course, we do not have the chase policy. With that being said, there's a few questions that the Police Department have, and we can discuss them at another time, about what we could do and what we cannot do for us the dirt bikes. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Any questions?
Quick question. What—do you have any idea what the overtime charges are for just managing the dirt bike riders on them?
When you say managing, when you say overtime cost, what does it cost for an officer to work overtime?
For dirt bikes?
I do not have that information, sir.
Okay. Can you get it to us?
Yes, sir. I can get that information for you.
Great. Thank you.
I am aware that they do have a— I am aware that they do have overtime—they do have officers working in the Northwest District every Sunday, but I'm not aware what the overtime cost is.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Captain, please forgive me if you already explained it and I missed it. What is the—what is the legal penalty for operating a dirt bike on the street?
The legal penalty is, first of all, the dirt bikes are not allowed on the street according to the Baltimore City Code, Article 40-1. It defines what a dirt bike is versus a motor scooter. It's not allowed to be operated on the street. Do not know what the penalty is, sir.
What is—the criteria, like a 50cc engine?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the other criteria is, is that if you—the difference between moped—and I did bring a picture here to make the determination between moped, mini bike versus the ATV versus a moped, versus a motor scooter. So the difference is the 50ccs or less.
And does Baltimore Police Department have a policy on whether or not to engage with a dirt bike rider on the street?
When you say engage, can you be a little clearer on that?
Well, for example, it's illegal to operate a dirt bike on a city street, correct?
That is correct.
So if a police officer is in a car, cruiser, and witnesses a dirt bike rider, someone operating a dirt bike on a city street, what does the police officer do?
Normally, what takes place is we'll make every attempt to stop the vehicle. But in the past, what has been occurring is that the dirt bikes realize that the police there, and they take off, they violate all of the local laws as far as the traffic lights, the stop signs. They just doesn't—they don't come to a stop. They don't—they weaving in between different cars that are waiting at the light. So the police officer just does not have the ability to catch up with that vehicle. Along with not having the ability to catch up with the vehicle, we also have to take into consideration the safety of the rest of the citizens of Baltimore and the citizens that are waiting at the light.
Sure. So when the—when the operator of the dirt bike—if the operator of the dirt bike decides to speed off per se, what is—the police officer does not pursue, is that correct?
We do not pursue, no, sir. However, if the foxtrot—if our helicopter's in the air, we will allow the helicopter to look, to see where the dirt bike is going, whether or not they'll be going into a gas station, or whether or not they'll be going into a garage. We do use our—the air to do those things.
And last question. Thank you for humoring, Mr. Chair. You mentioned there were three fatalities related to dirt bike riding last year.
Yes, sir, in 2015.
The homicide that occurred in the Seton Hill neighborhood on Sunday or Monday of this week—I believe Sunday of this week, in which one individual on a dirt bike shot another individual on the dirt bike, fired nine shots at him. Would that be included in next year's count?
What I gave you, the information is on fatalities, where there's an actual accident, where either two motor vehicles struck each other. If someone was shot on a dirt bike, that would be counted as a homicide, not as an accident.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
I think that's—it—let me—there just says—I'm looking at the current law, Article 19, Section 40.
Yes, sir.
No person may drive or ride any dirt bike in Baltimore City. No person may own, control, possess, or have custody of any dirt bike in Baltimore City. In the case of possession, one may have a dirt bike that is immobilized and secured away. Sounds like a little bit of contradiction, but I know that you're authorized, the Police Department, to actually—I guess you can—if you have suspicion or know of a dirt bike that's secured somewhere, you can go and remove that bike?
We can. We can confiscate the bike. The other law, too, that is important, is that—as you may or may not know—that the gas stations are not allowed to allow the dirt bikes to fill up.
Okay. But they can get a can and go home.
That's correct. They can get a can.
Right. All right. Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add for the good of the—
Not at this time.
Thank you, Captain.
You're welcome.
Captain was saying to me before—I know I shouldn't say everything, but the Captain was saying to me before, this is really his first time before us, and he hoped that we didn't beat him up. We did fine so far. Thank you so much. I do want to note that the Department of Recreation is here, and I'll just speak to their comments. As a program-oriented agency, Baltimore City Recs and Parks appreciates the intent of this piece of legislation. However, the legal complexities related to its enactment cause us to defer to the expertise of the Law Department and the Baltimore City Police Department. Therefore, Department of Parks and Recs agrees with City Council 15-0258 are in concept. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Wall? Good?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Wall a question?
Sure. Would you pick your mic up there? Is there a mic there? Thanks, Mr. Wall. They'll turn it on. You don't have to do anything. Thanks. Got it.
Bob, thanks for everything you do at Wreckin' Parks for our kids and for recreation. I know we all appreciate it. Is it possible, off the top of your head, to estimate what the capital cost of something like this would be?
I can get that for you. I know we've done some research into dirt bike facilities as a preliminary resource, knowing we were going into trying to find a dirt bike facility and having community meetings and such, so.
I mean, if the city owned the land, just to—you know, let's say a flat patch of land, how big would it have to be?
I do not know offhand with regards to acreage.
Are we talking like a million dollars, $8 million?
I would be guessing if I gave an answer, but we still go back to the legalities and the expertise of the Law Department and the Police Department with regards to our stance with regards to a facility, whether it would be a private-public partnership or a private enterprise, per se. I do know that, you know, there's a lot of kids out there that are born to ride, coming from a—my only brother, who was 16-years-old, and my father bought a Cessna scooter back in the day, and my father never realized that as soon as he got my brother on that Cessna, that he would be riding motorcycles and motorcycles and motorcycles. Of course, in a legal manner, but at the same time, you know, from my state—personal standpoint at Wreckin' Parks, you know, programming is what we do, and I do know that there is a need for some type of—something to happen within the city with regards to dirt bikes or motocross bikes.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Thank you. The Finance Department in its comments—Finance Department will work with other relevant agencies to evaluate the costs and benefits of the dirt park. We will now go to testimony of—there are a number of people who—Councilman Welch was asked to come in to give a formal presentation. We will begin with that. Let me just mention, before we move on, that I did mention my oversight. Sitting to my right is DePaul Nibber. He is staffed to the Recreation and Parks Committee. To his right is Kara Kuntz, who is staffed to Jack Young, President Jack Young. To her right is Paul Plymouth, also staffed to Councilman—Council President Jack Young. And to his right is Shaketa Wallace, who is staffed to Councilman Welch. Thank you. Steve Salisbury, you will begin the presentation of the—yes, up to the podium, please, of the American Motorcycle Association.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to address the Baltimore City Council. My name is Steve Salisbury. I work for the American Motorcyclist Association as the Government Affairs Manager for Off-Highway Issues. I'm also a lifelong dirt biker, and I'll take delivery of a new motorcycle this Saturday, so I have something to celebrate. Founded in 1924, the American Motorcyclist Association's mission is to promote the motorcycle lifestyle and protect the future of motorcycling. The AMA represents millions of on-and-off highway riders in Washington DC, state capitals, and towns and cities nationwide. As the world's largest motorsports sanctioning body, we write the competition, organizational, and safety rules that race promoters use in Maryland and in every state in the nation to ensure the integrity and safety of AMA racing and recreational events. In some areas of the country, the AMA districts manage AMA sanctioned competition events, and members of the local AMA District 7 are on the intended task force and with us here today. Print media and TV reports across the country have reported stories about urban dirt bikers and ATV riders acting irresponsibly, doing wheelies and stoppies, and at times, riding in groups large enough to block traffic and taking over city parks and private parking lots. While many urban stunt riders are unquestionably talented, it's clear that their illegal and unsafe antics do not represent the AMA's definition of the motorcycle lifestyle. It's similarly clear that, left unchecked, the expansion of this illegal activity is not protecting the future of motorcycling. In fact, it's quite the opposite. The illegal acts of riders are creating a public safety problem that requires police action, disrupts neighborhoods, and creates a poor public presentation—perception of the motorcycle and community in general. Within the AMA's mission of promoting the motorcycle lifestyle and protecting the future of motorcycling, we have been researching alternatives to illegal city riding, especially for urban youths. The hurdles we face include political and economic realities of the challenges of public opinion and rider acceptance. Yet we need to create responsible outlets for these urban riders. Urban and suburban off-highway vehicle parks in Texas, Arkansas, Iowa, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and elsewhere prove the passion for riding can be channeled in a positive direction. The AMA provided comments to Pittsburgh City officials when illegal riding peaked there in 2014. More recently, the AMA accepted an invitation to join forces with the National Youth Program Using Mini Bikes, or NiPm, and others in Philadelphia who are working to encourage responsible riding in urban settings. It has taken years to get other public OHV parks—OHV being off-highway vehicles—from the concept stage to opening the gates and welcoming riders. With the active involvement of national partners like NiPm, powersports manufacturers and local dealerships, enthusiast associations, local riders, law enforcement, religious and civic leaders, and politicians, I believe we have a formula that will encourage young urban enthusiasts to ride responsibly in a safe environment for them and their spectators. Providing a venue for responsible riding will allow riders to show the talents they have and further develop skills that can take them to local, national, or even international sanctioned competition events. The American Motorcyclist Association is pleased to be offered an active role in the Baltimore City Council Bike Task Force and looks forward to providing meaningful input. With the right combination of energy and pragmatic action, Baltimore can count itself among the forward-thinking cities that offer urban dirt bikers and the general public a way to safely coexist. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to helping further.
Thanks, Mr. Salisbury. Councilmembers? Any comments, questions? Good? Good? Oh, Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comments are just actually general and not response to the gentleman's testimony.
Mr. Salisbury, would you stay at the podium, please?
He doesn't have to. No, he's fine.
Oh, you're good?
No, no, he doesn't need to.
I'm sorry. It's not directed to you. I'm sorry.
So I think that—Mr. Chair and I thought about this. I think that when we're having these conversations about dirt bikes, we have to have a more open and honest conversation. The fact is, and the truth is, is that even if we build a dirt bike park, not everyone wants to go to the park or has any interest in going to the park. So what we have to realize as a city is that people are not going to stop riding dirt bikes. Just not going to happen. So they're going to be here, so what we have to do is figure out a way to make it so it doesn't impact citizens negatively. That's what we have to do. So that means we're going to have—the people are going to have to be uncomfortable, we're going to have to do things that we don't like to do, we're going to have to talk about things that we don't like, and we're going to have to figure out how to make it work park or elsewise, but we have to—need to have a deeper and more open conversation. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. I hear you, and just in my comments, maybe before you walked in or just as you were coming in, spoke to the fact that we do not want the illegal dirt bikes—activity—not the illegal dirt bikes, although they are illegal—in the city of Baltimore. We do not want the activity, but we do want to move it to a safer place. And in fact—in fact, in other cities, riders did go to the parks. They store their bikes—at the park, they use the parks for practice. They actually have left the streets and gone to the parks, because it's a different ballgame. It's something that people come to see. They—they get to show off their skills. They are rewarded with prizes, monetary and otherwise. I'm not making a case for it necessarily. I'm just saying, as in the case with the skateboarders. The skateboarders, when we gave them their park, they went to the park. That's where they wanted to go. That's where they saw other competitors, and they could show off together, and they could improve their game, so to speak, much more than individually out on the street skating by themselves. Again, not to make the case pro or con, I'm just—it's just my observation, one person's observation. Mark Speller, you're next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Council, members of the Committee, members of the community, and also my colleagues here. My name is Mark Speller. I'm the National Director for the National Youth Project Using—
Mr. Speller, I'm sorry.
Yes?
You have to speak to the Committee. We got people who are here to hear, but your audience is frankly the Council.
Certainly.
The panel.
Certainly. My name is Mark Speller. I represent—
Not to mention that you're live on television.
Great.
Okay.
It's even better.
Right.
Thank you. I represent the National Youth Project Using Mini Bikes. We have offices in Boston, Massachusetts, and Torrance, California, and we are here for a very, very important reason, and that reason is the youth of this city, who we find ourselves more concerned about than we should be because of the type of activity that is taking place. The National Youth Project Using Mini Bikes hopefully can help in becoming a significant and strategic element in, if we will, preventing some of the incidences that the captain here spoke to, and if nothing else, minimizing them. Starting in 1969, the National Youth Project Using Mini Bikes began through the generosity of the American Honda Motor Company Incorporated, recognizing the need for a program that was unique and untraditional. NiPm is a youth development program that prides itself on offering the youth of America an opportunity to develop self-esteem, acquire lifelong riding and living skills, and develop a sense of belonging using dirt bike riding as the motivational experience. This initiative is as well unique and untraditional, and very necessary. Our goal is to provide a service that can be incorporated into any type of opportunity that impacts youth in key social and civic areas, allowing them to concentrate on positive personal development. For that reason, and on behalf of NiPm, we wholly support the development of a public urban OHV park in the city of Baltimore. We also commit to continuing to assist the city in creating a space where not only people can safely and legally ride, but to provide a venue for which training, education, mentoring, and personal youth development is always available. I'd like to use the rest of my time to offer the Committee and the audience a visual testimony of the efficacy and value of NiPm. I have a video to show to you.
Sure. Thank you.
In 1969, American— Honda Motor Company saw a need. They recognized that not all children were interested in traditional sports, or they didn't respond to other types of youth services. But there was a magnetism to the lure of the outdoors and the excitement of motorcycles. The National Youth Project Using Mini Bikes, NiPm, was born. At ALIDA, that program is thriving today, teaching our students the value of personal goals, the importance of self-discipline, and the joy of accomplishment.
Well, at ALIDA, we're working with students, and we're helping them find their gifts and their strengths. Oftentimes, we have students who have gone through quite a bit of adversity and might not have had a lot of successes, and we know that, given the right opportunities, they can progress and be very successful young people into adults. What NiPm provides is— What NIPAM provides is that formula. It gives them goals, they work incrementally through that process. What's great about NIPAM is it really shows them that when they really want something, it's a progression. And so the instructor will work with the child and their parents and the team and develop different goals for them to obtain. So something that was really challenging for them before becomes incrementally easier. And the goal is to ride the bike, to go to the NIPAM class, to have that time with their mentor who's teaching the program. So it's just a perfect blend for our program, and it's great for our kids.
The mini bikes draws the kid in, and then it's the relationship with the instructors that becomes the focus towards the end, you know, after a few months of being in the program, that really keeps the kid drawn in to coming back and telling their friends about it and continuing to make NIPAM just be able to change people's lives.
The optimism about NIPAM is to help you, to help you with their treatment and your goals, like that they set for you. I like to ride a lot, and when we were able to spin mud, I was always having fun.
When I first came here, that's when I found out about NIPAM, and I was really excited. It feels good to be trusted. Actually, I've never had this much responsibility.
At ALIDA, the bikes are motivation, a reward. NIPAM allows our students to experience a unique sense of freedom and personal responsibility as they master their lessons and then take off for adventure. Without the incredible contributions of American Honda Motor Company, the journey to success that so many students have traveled would never have begun.
Honda's changed the course of young people's lives for over 40 years, but unless you were involved with NIPAM, you probably wouldn't know it. In a way, it's a great way for our students to realize that not only do they have people and teachers and coaches and counselors that work with them, but corporations out there really do care about their success, and they want them to be successful. So it's just a great company. I feel great to have them involved with our organization that way.
Honda's, all these years, has supported this program, and you know, it's just amazing what it's done. So Honda's huge, huge in this whole thing, and I just, I'm so appreciative to be a part of it, and I feel very blessed and honored to be working in NIPAM, and you know, I hope from years to come, you know, I get to stay here and do this, and I just, I really thank them for that.
I love NIPAM, and it helped me throw up other things. It's fun, and it's also challenging, but you get better at it.
Like, it's helped me accomplish what I need to accomplish, and it's helped me a lot because I've come a long way. Thanks a lot for helping us, Honda.
On behalf of ALIDA and the many students who have passed through her doors, we extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt thanks to American Honda Motor Company for the National Youth Project Using Minibikes, NIPAM, and the difference you've made in the lives of so many.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speller. Any questions, comments, my colleagues? Thank you, sir. Ed Kelly.
My name is Ed Kelly. I'm the CEO of the Robert F. Kennedy Children's Action Corps in Massachusetts, which happens to be the national operational headquarters for NIPAM. I have been actively involved in NIPAM since 1975. I began my career at 15 years old. But I would say that in all my years in juvenile justice and child welfare, I've never seen a program that is more powerful in working with hard-to-reach children, in that when NIPAM is applied with the proper, first of all, safety concerns around children, NIPAM has an incredible safety track record, and I worked in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and we had a very close relationship with the police department that was beneficial to both the community, the police department in general. So I would just urge you to consider the potential that could be here for a community to come around, it's young people like this with a very special gift and commit to you that NIPAM and the Robert F. Kennedy Children's Action Corps would be able to, would be willing to help in any way. If you go onto our website, you will also see the National Resource Center for Juvenile Justice at the Robert F. Kennedy Children's Action Corps, which talks about working with dual-status children and probation review. So just an idea of some of the resources that I think we could bring to this effort if you chose to pursue it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comments, questions from my colleagues? Thank you again. Mike Spawneller.
Hi, I want to thank the Recreation and Parks Committee for hearing us today. My name is Mike Spawneller, I'm a lifetime motorcyclist, a 34-year member in District Seven of the American Motorcycle Association, a real estate developer with the Hogan Companies out of Annapolis, and also a board member of Skate Park of Baltimore, working with Stephanie Murdock, and currently receiving construction bids to finish out the skateboard park up in Hampden. I grew up in a motorcycling family. My father was a racer, I learned to ride at age four, and I've ridden and raced motorcycles pretty much my entire life. Motorcycling has been a source of a lot of strong relationships throughout my life, traveling with family and friends to races and riding events since I was a child, and was certainly instrumental in keeping me occupied and mostly out of trouble as a youth during my teenage period. My work with Skate Park of Baltimore and also a smaller skate park redevelopment effort in the city of Annapolis draws a lot of parallels to the situation currently faced by dirt bike riders in Baltimore. Like dirt bike riding, skateboarding is a sport that has adapted itself to cityscapes, causing constant run-ins with police and security guards pretty much around the world. As a result, cities around the planet had chosen to head this problem off by providing dedicated facilities, giving kids a legal option rather than the only option available to them being illegal. The point's always going to be raised that building a park is no guarantee of keeping dirt bikes off the street, but as I said, doing so provides a legal alternative where riders can receive instruction, learn safer methods, and learn about opportunities within the established motorcycling community. Nobody expresses that this is a silver bullet per se, but we believe that the formation of the Dirt Bike Task Force is the first step needed to address the issue of dirt bike riders and harness the talent in Baltimore City in a more productive and legal direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Thank you. Let's see, Russell Irving. Say again.
I will not be speaking.
You will not be speaking. Oh, thanks, okay. You're right. Thank you. From the Motocross Council, Wind O'Neil. It's a cool name.
Hello, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Welch, thank you for inviting me. My organization is called the Motocross Council, and we build motocross tracks. I can build your dirt bike park this summer. This is what we do. I have a plan to build a motocross park on one side and a wheelie park on the other, and we've developed that through ideas with the Director of Parks and the Deputy Director of Parks. With the city's blessing, we can have riding there this summer. This solves the problem of having nowhere to ride dirt bikes legally. We don't need city funding. Because we are a nonprofit, we can get RTP funding. Dirt bike riders need a refuge, somewhere safe for families to go riding together. The illegal riding began when Baltimore closed its motocross park over 35 years ago. Motocross is a sport where riders ride their dirt bikes on dirt obstacle courses. A motocross park would need to be free from illicit activity because of the RTP requirements. This can be one part of a comprehensive plan to get dirt bikes off the streets. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you explain to me what RTP funding is?
Recreational Trails Program. It's a federal, it uses federal funds, and it's administered by the state's S.H.A., actually right down the street. And you make an application for this money, they're dying to give it away, and it just has to be, the application has to be in by June 1st, to be freed up by like November.
Is this capital or operating dollars?
I don't know how you would say it, but it's for construction of trails or dirt bike parks.
Okay, cap, okay, got it. How much does, how much does a dirt bike, like what you described, with track on one side and the wheelie part on the other, how much do you estimate that costs?
How much would it cost?
Yeah, to build.
The main, the main expense is fencing, because you want it to be fenced. That allows you to get the required insurance and to prevent just unauthorized egress. But it depends on how developed. The reason that I said that you can start this summer is you would start on phase one and just let people ride. But motocross is more substantial than that, and you can develop a park with more obstacles and more attractions.
So hypothetically, if you built a park, how would you pay to operate it? Like, how would you fund the operations and maintenance of the park?
Through fees. As Mr. Wall said, it would be like a public-private partnership.
And those fees would cover things like operations and maintenance, but also insurance?
Yes.
So this would be on private property?
It would be on public land, possibly parkland, but the vendor would be a private company.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Larry C. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Council Walsh. My name is Larry Smith, and I'm the founder and president of Look Forward My Brother. Look Forward My Brother is an educational civic action organization established by myself in 2010, and it's dedicated to the welfare of the African-American family with special emphasis on the African-American male. Across our great nation, many young African-American males believe they will not live to reach adulthood, and many believe that America has nothing to offer them. For the most part, society has neglected them and cast them aside to be dealt with by law enforcement. We have seen this occurring around the country as well as within our city, with laws, policies, and procedures such as war on drugs, three-strike-outlaws, and zero-tolerance policies. What we have not seen is a well-thought-out plan to provide hope to our youth and young adults, as well as a sustained plan to provide them the means to be successful at something they enjoy. A bike park is a perfect plan to provide our youth and young adults with hope. My organization, Look Forward My Brother, would also propose that as part of the planning for the park, consideration be given to, one, a long-range plan to make dirt bike riding an Olympic event, and two, providing training, school facilities that will allow our youth and young adults to acquire the skills to become entrepreneurs. Initially, these skills would consist of bike repair, maintenance, sales, and building of the bikes. We envision assistance from our universities, colleges, and the business community to make this happen. Look Forward My Brother envisions Baltimore being the mecca for our youth and young adults from all across the nation. With this plan in motion, it is easy to envision crime being reduced in Baltimore to the 1960 levels, Baltimore's economy growing, and property values across the city increasing. The bike park can be a reality if we believe in our youth and young adults, and if we believe in our city and our citizens. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any comments, questions? You have written testimony which you wish to share with us? Thank you. We will enter into the record and the bill filed. India Artes.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. My nephew was a 2008 dirt bike fatality, and I do fully support what we can do to help the dirt bikers, and I will say that when my nephew was hit and killed, that the Baltimore police officer said to my sister, as my nephew lay dying, "We told him we would get him." Thank you.
Thank you, sorry to hear that. Kathy Nicholas.
My name is Katherine Cooper Nicholas. I want to thank Councilman Walsh for inviting me this evening, and I am the founder and executive director of Sister Savings the City, a faith-based youth advocacy and youth development organization. I am here to support having dirt bike parks...
I'm sorry, Ms. Nicholas, I'm sorry, I apologize. We're going to move the podium, you're actually on television and we couldn't see you. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, not a problem.
Okay, we're good now.
Okay. I am here to support having dirt bike parks in Baltimore City. I would especially like to have a dirt bike park in the Park Heights community. Many news reports have shown Park Circle as a popular gathering location for dirt bike riders. Sister Savings the City has done the research to support the need and sustainability for a dirt bike park in our community. Prior to moving back to Baltimore, I lived in Chester County, Pennsylvania, where dirt bike parks were seen as family gatherings. My sons and I attended many events there, and it was really a happy place. We recommend that dirt bike parks be part of a larger youth, young adult complex we are proposing for the Park Heights community. Now, I had some handouts that I asked to be passed around.
The, we, the members of the panel, we do have them.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that lists a comprehensive initiative that we have been working on for the last six years for the Park Heights community. As many of the council members know, that the Park Heights community had a master plan that was formulated in 2006 and still working on it. So it's 1,500 acres of land to be developed for mixed use. One of the things that we would like to see is a youth complex. When I'm listening to some of the presenters this evening, there's a major piece that's missing, and that is, the bikers need to be part of the planning process, from the beginning and to the end. And when I hear comments in the audience about, "Oh, they're not going to come," well, they may not come if they don't feel that they are part of the process. So this is something that we have to do. My son, he went out for Sister Savings the City, and he talked to the bikers. He said, "Ask them, would you like to have your own place?" And of course, they would like to have their own place, but we have to do it with decency and in order. We can't continue to ignore the unsafe and deadly practices of dirt bike cruising throughout the city of Baltimore. So I just want to reiterate that we talk with our bikers, form partnerships, we are a nonprofit organization, I heard someone else mention that they are nonprofit. It can take care of itself with the sponsors that I saw in Pennsylvania, oh my goodness, the prizes that they gave out to the young people, and they did it in age groups. So that film showed you for younger ones, but where we went, it went from young ones all the way up to adults. So we can do this, but we have to engage our bikers, we have to engage our community. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Uh, we appreciate, uh, your comments. Any, uh, questions or comments from colleagues? Troy Hackley.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Troy Hackley, and I'm the host of the youth sports show, Urban Sports Beat, which can be seen on People 75 Saturdays at noon. And we also air for about six months on ABC Two, Saturday nights at 1:00 AM. We cover youth sports from baseball, basketball, football, lacrosse, track and field, boxing. And what we want to do, what we continue to do, and our motto is to showcase young people doing positive things. Now, as it relates to the dirt bike issue, I'm for it. It's an opportunity for our young people to do some positive and incredible things, because some of the young people are very talented. Now, I have a personal interest because my nephew, Sean Hackley Jr., is one of the top motocross racers in the world. He's from Baltimore. He raced in AMA. He won a race, I believe, when he was 13 called Loretta Lynn. And when he won that championship, he got his own Disney commercial. So he was the Disney kid. So we traveled all over the country, and he races with, a racer by the name of, uh, good friends with James Bubba Stewart, which is one of the number-one African-American racers in the world. I'm passionate about our children. I've held events where I bring in athletes to talk to kids. I've done events with Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes has been at events that I've done where I've interviewed him for my show when we did something at Margaret Brent with Josh Shelby when he redid the basketball court. Uh, I think about it, and as you guys were talking, I thought about how boxers go to the gym. And once they box and train, they don't do it outside in the community. They go to the facility. Hopefully, at some point, motocross racers would go to the facility to practice and no longer do it on the street. Once you bring in the talent, and you have these groups here that see the talent. My nephew, now, I'm gonna date myself a little bit here, but I had a dirt bike way back. And when I got too old for it, I gave it to my nephew. He started racing, well, in the neighborhood. Eventually, he transitioned to the professional amateur ranks and raced at, what, Big Burn Raceway? And he started getting trophies and plaques, but he didn't get it to that professional level. But he had a son, which is Sean Hackley Jr., and he started him at the age of five. And so there are levels to this opportunity, and how it started with me, it started with my nephew, and then to his son. And he became, he's raced at the Baltimore Arena and won it, and I remember one night, I want to say it was 2003, he won the whole race. He was like 11, little teeny thing, but he was winning everything. And my phone was just ringing, asking me about, do I know the Sean Hackleys? Because we have the same name. I said, that's my nephew. And so I'm very proud of him, and we can be proud of a lot of young people. There's talent out here. Once kids realize that there's an opportunity and get some structure, and these groups come in and start directing them on how to do it, the interest will be there. The kids were calling me, my phone was ringing. Their dads were calling me about, how do you get involved? But a lot of kids don't have the financial resources to get to these events. And thankfully, his dad did, but a lot of kids don't have that. By having a park, it creates a local opportunity for the kids to go there. Now, you might not get this older generation, but that next generation who's out there with them, who's just on the bicycles, you probably will get them. So I think we got to look at it in terms of, uh, long-range goals, future goals, and I just wanted to say that, and hopefully, what I say can be some help to, um, creating an opportunity to have a park for the kids. That's it.
Great. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your comments tonight. Let me just mention that I do have, um, a letter for the record, uh, from a gentleman who could not be here in person, but did send his testimony. I will read it into the record. Uh, it's from Anthony Chambers, board member, Popleton Now, the community action group. His, uh, testimony to this committee. "I am a resident of the Popleton neighborhood, have been for over 28 years. I remember when the dirt bike enthusiasts began using West Fayette Street as part of their Sunday evening ride. At first, there was only a few half-dozen or so performing bike tricks at better than 40 miles an hour, and why not? This stretch of West Fayette Street between Fremont and Cary Streets is very tempting for such activities as drag racing, trick riding, and ordinary speeding by ordinary citizens. Today, there are over 100 riders sometimes in two waves. They have little regard for public safety of their own, or their own. The police must have their hands full with other crime investigation because traffic enforcement is sorely lacking attention, has been for quite a while. It was previously reported. I understand the addressing the needs of, for all citizens. I just believe with all our problems, the money can be used in a better way, like improving elementary and middle schools, after-class programs, or returning music to the classrooms, anything but this. I do oppose any private investor who may find a spot on South Boston Street or even in Cherry Hill Park, provided they do so with their own capital, no help from the city, not even the smallest of tax incentives without a clear objection plan, already 70% under construction." Thank you. Um, that's, uh, signed by Anthony W. Chambers, citizen and resident of, uh, West Fayette Street. That will go into the record. Uh, we have, uh, a few others who wish to, uh, speak. Go ahead. Stephanie Murdock, who I mentioned earlier, um, changed the face of skateboarding in Baltimore City.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Stephanie Murdock, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, I'd like to thank the sponsor of the legislation for bringing us together to talk about this topic. And, um, I just want to start out by saying, um, in full disclosure, I do work for the city of Baltimore, but my views here tonight in no way represent, um, my boss, so let's just get that out of the way. So I founded an organization called the Skate Park of Baltimore over 10 years ago that was able to build a public concrete destination skate park in the city of Baltimore. The first phase cost $180,000, and it opened in 2014. And this year, fingers crossed, we will be building the second phase of that facility, which will be 11,000-square-foot street plaza. In total, this facility will cost close to $600,000. That money we raised in partnership, uh, with the city of Baltimore and the state of Maryland, as well as hundreds of individual donors. Um, I'm here today because I've been hearing a lot of parallels about skateboarding and, uh, motocross and dirt bike riding. I ride a skateboard, and I also ride a motorcycle, so I rode it, uh, to work today, just because it's beautiful. So, anyway, I'm not here to necessarily speak for the dirt bike riding community. I am not in a position to do that. I don't know if any of the actual riders are here tonight, but they are the ones that should be consulted about what this future facility should look like. And I am here to share with you a story of one young rider whom I've known for over a decade. I'm going to call her Ms. Stiles. Now, she did not come here tonight because the nature of the beast, I suppose. You're asking people who are doing something that is presently illegal to come to City Hall and show their ID at the door, um, and then tell a televised audience what they're doing with their face on television. So, I don't think so. And that's totally understandable. Um, so I, I met with her and I spoke with her extensively about her story and what she wants me to convey to the committee, and that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to tell her story, not mine. So Ms. Stiles grew up in West Baltimore. I met her for the first time at Carol Skate Park off of Bayard Street, um, when I was doing a, a youth mentoring program. And this is one tough chick. The, she is so passionate about skating. Um, when I met her, she's one of those people that would try something and try something and try something until she got it. And being a white girl in West Baltimore on a skateboard by yourself, that in itself could be a scary thing, but that never fazed her. And when she got into dirt bike riding, I went over her house. I said, "Please, take this helmet." I gave her a jacket. I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get her to take the boots, but, you know, I, I reached out to her and said, "Hey, I know what you're doing is dangerous. I ride a bike too. Here's some safety equipment." Um, I've sat with her on her front steps and talked about what, um, motocross means to her. I've removed stitches from her knee from an incident where she got into an accident. So this is a very serious matter that affects the riders as well as the, the community at large. So this is what she suggested. She says, um, as members of the committee have recognized, just because you build a park doesn't mean you're going to stop people riding in the street, just like with skateboarding. It gives them an alternative to street skating, but people are always going to skateboard in the street. Now they have a facility where they can go and not worry about, uh, getting in trouble, and that's an attractive option for them, so that's why they go there. And I think that could be an attractive option for dirt bike riders as well. Now, Ms. Stiles told me that a lot of riders don't want a dirt park, that they want a parking lot, a fenced-in parking lot there where they can practice their craft, where people can watch, and they want it to be a place where they can go and feel safe and not feel like the cops are waiting for them as soon as they leave to arrest them. Some of the problems are, is that a lot of these people don't have motorcycle licenses. A lot of these people can't afford or don't choose to wear safety equipment. A lot of these folks don't have titles on their bike. So they don't want to feel like a target if they, there's a facility that's for them where every time they go there, there's just someone waiting for them outside. So this could happen anywhere, you know, an empty parking lot. It could happen down at the stadium. We brought 50,000 people to the M&amp;T Bank Stadium for the do-tour. A national event with motocross, bike riding, skateboarding. Um, we had the Grand Prix downtown where we closed off the streets and let professional athletes go Mach 10 around the city. So this isn't a new concept. Some of the other things that she suggested about the things that they might want is, um, they would also perhaps be interested in a street closure. She mentioned the 3,300 block of Reisterstown Road. Um, escorted Sunday rides could be a possibility. So, um, those were some of her ideas. And one thing that she brought up to me is that, um, there's a stereotype, a negative stereotype associated with this sport. And some people think because these folks, you know, have gold fronts or the clothes they wear or they're wearing a mask, that they're, they're dangerous or scary. Um, she wanted you guys to know that these are people, these are parents, these are taxpayers, these are homeowners. Um, these are contributing members of society, and they're not all thugs. And she wants you guys to know that, that many of these people are youth athletes. One thing that she brought up to me, um, is that there is a no-chase policy, um, which, uh, Captain Corbett was kind enough to tell us about. But if there's a no-chase policy, why are they still being chased? Some of the stories she's told me is that they're being harassed, they've been maced, they've been run off the road, they've been tased, and they've been disrespected. So although there may be a no-chase policy in place, that's not the feedback that I'm getting from the community. People are still being chased. Some of these riders, um, you know, they, this is their passion, and they don't want to get hurt any more than they want to hurt somebody. She told me that when she first started riding with the group, the head organizer said, "Don't run the lights," you know? They don't want to die. Simple as that. She said that they, most of the time, only go up on curbs when they're being chased, and that on most Sundays, nothing goes wrong. So this is a community that comes together around this sport. And she says, at the end of the day, what they're doing is a traffic violation. Imagine if we treated other folks who did, who had traffic violations the way that these folks are being treated. Would you mace someone on a bicycle because they ran a red light? Would you try to run somebody off the road on a Vespa for, for improperly changing lanes? I don't think so. So she wanted me to, to stress that, that this is a traffic violation. Um, as far as what's next, I had a few suggestions, um, that, that came from Ms. Stiles that she wanted me to share with the group. Um, she says that the next meeting should be somewhere in the community where stakeholders can be present. She suggested a block party, and I think that's a great idea. Um, I also think that, uh, a task force should be established with agency representatives and the riders themselves to discuss the project. The Skate Park of Baltimore actually started at a hearing of the city council over a decade ago where we brought the issue to the council and we began a dialogue around it. Um, this task force can identify potential sites, and they could even plan a pilot event where they might do a, a, a street closure that's sanctioned. So those are some of the things that she asked, um, for me to, to share with you. And, um, I, I'm hoping at the next meeting I can, I can get her to come out, and I hope I, I did her justice by representing her ideas here today. I'm also, you know, happy to advise in any way, but as I said, I'm not representing their community. I'm just speaking to you from my experience as a park advocate and also as a, a friend to a, a young lady that participates in this sport.
Great, and you spoke very well to that. I really appreciate that. Any questions from my colleagues? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Leo Barrows Jr.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
And the members of the council, uh, friends, neighbors in Baltimore City, glad you're here. I am the president and founder of The Roots of Scouting, Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) federally tax-exempt organization in the city. And I'm also the chairperson of the Committee of Concerned Citizens, Incorporated. And I have other titles. More importantly, I'm an agitator, and a fairly good agitator, and community organizer. Uh, I happen to be in favor of, uh, what Brother Walsh is talking about. I'm, I'm in favor of the, the park, the special provisions that we need to have for our youth and young adults. And quite frankly, I'm tired of having the, uh, black youth and young American, black, young Americans, um, and African-Americans demonized. And I want to use that term demonized for their activities with regard to dirt biking. Now, of course, this city has a history of accommodating special interest groups, as has already been mentioned, the dog parks, the skateboarding, the Grand Prix, which was a grand mess in, in many of its things. Millions of dollars spent at the behest of the, of the mayor to attract not just Baltimore city residents, but people throughout the country. And I'm not sure we ever got, we ever got paid, or, or whether that was ever cleared up in terms of the financial loss that this city experienced. But I want to emphasize the need to engage young people where they are. And I'm talking about the economics, and others have spoken of it. There's an economic factor here we should not, uh, disregard. And that is, when you look at the talents of the riders and what that entails, then we can talk about things like dirt bike rodeos, can we not? Uh, we can talk about competitive events. We are talking about, and someone used the term entrepreneurial. Well, there are implications in terms of job creation. What about, uh, sales? Uh, one of the things, one of the greatest contradictions, correct me if I'm in error, is that it is legal to purchase dirt bikes in Baltimore City, but it's illegal to ride them. Am I in error? In, in essence, this is what I'm told. That should never have been. This council and the Democratic political operatives, along with the state, should have reconciled those positions a long time ago. We shouldn't have that contradiction at all. I'm a scout leader, among other things, and I will tell you, at Broad Creek in the last two years, they're offering the A- two years, they're offering the ATV, uh, riding instruction. Broad Creek is a memorial scout reservation here in Harford County in, in, in Maryland. And of course, are there not dirt bike tracks in surrounding counties and political subdivisions in the state of Maryland? Am I in error? They do exist. I will tell you that the police department needs to be involved in mentoring. Again, we have motorcycle police officers, do we not? Don't we have the MTA police officers on motorcycles? They should be involved in recruitment. Uh, this is an opportunity to bring brothers and sisters into the police department, I would think. All of them don't have records, and if they do, we can deal with expungement. But we don't have enough black police officers in Baltimore City. The majority of police officers are white, and they don't live in Baltimore City. So I'm suggesting that the police get with it in terms of being creative and involved in providing assistance, um, in this regard in a positive way. Competitive events? Yes, indeed. That's essentially what I have to say, that if we're talking about dirt bike park construction, we damn well better be talking about minority business enterprise hiring, 'cause we don't hire enough black people in this city. And that's been a, 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 a problem all along. Now, I don't know who's gonna do the constructing, whether they're coming from out of state or whether they're in-state, but we need to see some black faces with jobs here, and we would have fewer problems in our city if we had black folks working on these kinds of projects. But I applaud your leadership insofar as we need to do that. We need to put our arms around our youth. And by the way, any motorized vehicle on the streets of Baltimore City, in my opinion, should be licensed. Now whatever that indicates, it indicates, they should be licensed if they're on the streets of this city, if they're motorized vehicles. And we ought to make provisions for that. Does that involve insurance? Maybe so. But we need to get sponsorship for these young people and teach them the responsible way on how to do what we need to have done. God bless you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. We appreciate that very much. We have two other persons signed up to testify. If there are others who are not signed up, we will bring them forward. Looks like three persons. Um, I am going to relinquish the chair and ask my, uh, the committee's vice chair, Eric Costello, uh, to continue the hearing and, uh, to close it out. I have a, um, a matter that I must attend to, and so, um, Mr. Councilman Costello, Kim Truheart will be coming next to testify.
Thanks, Councilman. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Ms. Truheart?
Good evening, Councilman. Um, I too want to commend Councilman Welch for, um, initiating this resolution. I have no confidence that this committee will come up with a viable plan. Let me say that. Um, as we've heard tonight, just the mere fact that this hearing is in this room, in this building, that requires identification for folks who have been alleged to have violated the law is pretty offensive. I would hope that you're gonna develop a strategy that gets this committee out and the community, that that schedule of hearings will be published well in advance, and it should also be communicated very broadly and widely. And if you need help, um, I know of some folks who can help get the word out. There's a task force. I'd like to know the, the membership of this task force. As we've heard, we've, we, we, we have in surrounding jurisdictions, um, facilities that come close to what we're trying to produce here, which tells me that maybe this ought to be a regional kind of solution. And I think Councilman Welch, you and I may have discussed this before, but, um, I think Baltimore City's investment could be paired with other jurisdictions' investments. Um, I'm sure ridership will come from far and wide if this is done well, and therefore why not get Harford County, um, Baltimore County, and Anarundel County to buy into this? Um, and maybe even, um, we can make it such that Baltimore City residents aren't bearing the brunt of the investment. I absolutely think it's a wonderful idea to have a series of meetings with experts who can come to the table and bring us some insights in how to do this, 'cause, 'cause my government don't know how to do this kinda stuff, okay? And so we need to acknowledge that. And so the more expertise we can bring to the table, I think the better. The partnerships are gonna be critical and important, and I do not want Baltimore City to, to take the brunt of this. It, it will fail. Um, so anyway, let's get the kids involved, okay? And you really, really have to go to them, you know? Mr. Barrows was correct. Meet them where they are. Um, and last point I wanna make is, this city needs a comprehensive strategic plan for our youth. I've only been asking for it for three years now, and we keep doing piecemeal solutions to this comprehensive problem. And, um, I'm not saying or suggesting that you should stop forward momentum, but I think, um, this body needs to work on insisting that we have a comprehensive plan out of this administration sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Truheart. You have comments, Councilman Welch?
Yeah, Ms. Truheart, the, the task force hasn't been formed yet. We, we will be in the process of putting together a 17-member task force to deal with the issues that you just brought, uh, before the body. And I do recognize the regional nature of, of the issue, because it, it doesn't just affect Baltimore City youth, but youth throughout the region. And lastly, we're, we're planning a field trip to actually look at some dirt bike parks that we think might fit the profile of Baltimore City, and I'll, I'll let you and keep you informed.
And we're gonna invite some young people to go on that.
And I do agree, we, we do need to move the next hearing into the community, but we did offer to the 12 o'clock boys, uh, a person that actually represents them to appear tonight. Uh, it was very difficult for her to get to the hearing, but we understand that we do need the input from every dirt bike rider, because if they don't, if they don't feel involved and, and participants in the building of the park, they won't use it.
You know, a couple of months ago, um, there was a, a meeting here in City Hall with some homeless folks, and they didn't have identification to get into the building, right? And so they were treated very badly from my perspective. Um, and I spoke to the police commissioner about that, that they're citizens and they're residents here, and there ought to be an opportunity to accommodate those folks. And some of these young people may be in the same situation. Um, and he felt that his people at the front desk ought to be more accommodating. I don't know if he's done anything about it, but when we have public hearings in this building, we need to factor that in. And legislatively, if you guys need to do something, do something, okay? They deserve to be able to come into this building, all right?
Thank you, Ms. Truheart. Uh, moving forward, out of respect for everyone's time, I'm gonna ask that those testifying limit their testimony to two minutes, please. Uh, Mr. Herbert?
Hello, everyone. My name is Robert Herbert. I wanna thank you for allowing me to speak today. Um, I wanna speak more on a personal level. Um, I have a son who races motocross. Uh, he's been raised in the city. Uh, he eats, sleeps, and breathes motocross. And as you know, there's no tracks, there's, there's, you know, I try to get him to do basketball, try to get him to do football. He does nothing but wanna race bikes. We spend so much time traveling to other places. Um, it's so hard to compete in this sport if you don't have the elements in your surrounding areas. And we're constantly on the road. Um, between school and him trying to race dirt bikes, it's difficult. Um, like the gentleman said here, he made it to Loretta Lynn's, you may not know, but it's the most prestigious amateur race there is. He comes from the city, rides once a week, and the average competitors are in those other surrounding areas, and they're constantly riding. And it's so hard to compete against these kinda people when you don't have the elements in your area. We constantly support, support the city. Wherever we go, whatever we do, we talk about Baltimore and we talk about the city. But it's just, it's just bad that we speak so highly of our city, but don't have the things to help us move forward. It has done a lot for him. It helped him in school with his grades. Not to say he was a problem child, but he, by A.B. honor roll, um, he's, he's, he's definitely more mature. Uh, he gets to see, by, by being in this sport, it helps him see other places, meet other people, and what I realize is that average kid from the city, if you're just doing bad, you don't, you don't get to expand. So, uh, this sport, I think, is a very important sport for the youth. I just believe that if you guys did bring a park to this, to this city, there would be a lot of kids, a lot of families that'd be thankful, because I run into these kids all day long. And the average family in Baltimore City, and I'm only speaking on a personal level, doesn't do motocross or race motocross like my family. It brought my family closer. Um, and, and I think it will help a lot of the kids, because they constantly run up to me, where can I go? What can I do? But they don't, they, their parents doesn't have the truck to drive two hours to go somewhere and ride. So I would appreciate if you can definitely make some kinda progress, because there's, I know there's other families like me that really, really need this park in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert.
Greetings. My name is Lauren.
Ms. Hayman, can you please pull the mic down a little bit? Thank you, ma'am.
Better. Greetings. My name is Lauren Hayman. Um, I wanna thank Councilman Welch for inviting me here today. Um, I'm a representative for the Allison Blanding family. She was my god sister who was killed last year in April, um, so I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, my family. We are definitely for dirt bike parks. With the passing of my god sister, um, it propelled me to, uh, reach out to the community to see how can we effectively make a change so that there would be no more victims like my family. And, um, what I did was, I met with some of the dirt bike riders within the community. I've actually talked and met with Steve, and most of the young people that I've spoken with, they're in favor of dirt bike parks as well. However, what they have said is that, um, outside of the normal dirt bike park, they would like to have actually an asphalt, uh, park, because that's what they're used to. So we are definitely in favor, um, of the dirt bike park. I agree that, uh, we need young people, uh, who have their input, so I'm providing that input from the young people, as Steve can attest to. I have met with them, we have talked, I've had several talks with them, and for the most part, they're for it. Um, so whoever is saying that they won't go of course, uh, you have children that will do some things and children who won't, but there has to be something done, uh, to eradicate the accidents that are happening unnecessarily. So again, on behalf of my god sister and my family, Allison Blanding, uh, we thank you for this opportunity, and we are definitely for dirt bike parks within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hayman. Um, I have, uh, some closing comments, and then I'm gonna pass it to the sponsor of the, uh, resolution, Councilman Welch. Uh, but first, a little housekeeping. We do not have a quorum. Uh, we will be, uh, setting up a time to reconvene in the future. That will be posted on Baltimore City Council's website, unlikely announced at a, at a subsequent, uh, city council hearing on a Monday evening. Thank you for, uh, introducing this legislation, Councilman Welch. Uh, while I understand this is an important topic to talk about, I would be greatly remiss if I didn't mention that, uh, we're not having a dialogue right now about the immediate problem, which is the illegal dirt bike activity that's occurring on our streets. It's dangerous, it's reckless, uh, there's a lot of folks in the community that are upset about it, and I think that if we're gonna have this long-term, uh, dialogue about how to move forward from here, we also need to have a dialogue immediately, uh, with Baltimore Police about how we're gonna curtail that illegal behavior, uh, that's dangerous, that's occurring in our streets, whether it's on the Pennsylvania Avenue corridor in my district, uh, or coming down Mount Vernon from, uh, North Avenue. It's, it's a very serious problem, uh, and I hope that we can pick that dialogue up with BPD, uh, in the immediate future. I would greatly appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, an individual who's just arrived. I know it's a late hour, but this is the person who actually represents, uh, the 12 o'clock boys. Uh, I would, I would beg your indulgence, uh, to just extend a few more minutes to hear her comments. This is the organization where the, that has the movie. Uh, I've never seen the movie, but they have a movie that was, has been done, and I'm very curious to hear what their thoughts and their comments might be.
It'd be my pleasure to accommodate your request, Councilman Welch. How you doing, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Ms. Pat.
Pat, give your full, full name.
Oh, Patricia Redman. I'm known as Ms. Pat, the heart of Philly Community Liaison nationwide with the police department, FOP, and the fire department, along with the motorcycles.
Okay, and, uh, your last name again, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Say it again.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Redman, uh, I would, uh, ask that you, uh, keep your comments under three minutes and, and out of respect for everyone's time, as we were just getting ready to wrap up.
I'm sorry I'm late. I'm, I work in York PA.
No problem, ma'am, but just wanna make sure.
I was told that you're here talking about the motorcycles, you know, and I was been dealing with you, Councilman. I wanna thank you first of all for giving the motorcycles a chance. I am the community liaison for the motorcycles, the MC community, and if we can kinda get it together to work along, which we have been working with the police department, we've been doing runs, we do Run for Peace, we did a big toy drive at the Northwest Police Department, we donated toys, kids had to play, had to buy anything with city council. Um, Mr. Welch, we've been doing positive things, and I understand you're having a problem with the four-wheelers, and I was trying to explain two years ago, before this thing got this worse, that we need to go to New Jersey Motorsports. Um, it's a, it's a, um, a motorsport bike up there where these four-wheelers can ride, they can have a good time, people can come and watch, and they'd be safe. But what they doing in the street, this is the only way they know how to ride, is to go out here and just ride in our streets. It's not safe. My job is to keep these guys safe, women, men and women, safe. So if we can get a, a sports bike motor park here, it'd be happy for the people to, to be safe, a place for kids can go, they do fundraisers, and somebody get killed, we there. We have more police officers today in Baltimore and fire departments that ride. We have people just like you guys sitting here with your ties, take off on the weekends. You party real hard on the weekends and you work real hard during the week. We have good people in this bike community. We just need to get it together and put all of us into one. A lot of this crime that's in Baltimore can be stopped. You asking for citizens to tell them things, bikers, when they see things, they react to them. We're not policemen, but we would try to produce, we try our best to police the city and around us. We don't need policemen when we have our parties. You don't hear anything about our parties. The only thing you might hear, we raise money for the food bank, for a kid that was killed. We just try to help. And I want everybody to understand that the motorcycle clubs, they are not gangs. Now, we do have some, but them outlaw clubs know that the good club is more 99% clubs than it is the 1 percenter, and they looking at us to make the city better. I'm all, all I'm asking is for you guys to take some time to go up to New Jersey and look at the motorsport park. They have a clubhouse and everything. It's big money involved in this.
Ms. Pat, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, did, did, I know you're associated with the 12 o'clock boys. Did, I know you're associated with the Twelve O'Clock Boys. Did they have any comments that through you, they'd like to share with us this evening?
All they want to do is ride. All they want to do is ride. And with the Police Department, they not angry or anything like that. They just want to ride, and they want to ride safe. They don't want nobody being hurt. They don't even want their guys being hurt. All they want is a chance to ride. We have a lot of field in Jew Hill Park. On the other side, where y'all did the barricade, on the other side, they're parked near Falls Road. It's nothing but dirt. All they asking is permission to ride someplace safe. That's all they asking. These are young folks, and now, they're young. When they get older like us, they're going to be buying Hollies and all kinds of other big bikes. So we need to teach them what to do and how to do it.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
All I'm asking is a chance. Just think about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your testimony.
And I'm sorry I'm late.
Oh, you're fine.
Quite fine.
You got here, that's what counts. Thank you.
There's one more person that wishes to testify. This will be the last person testifying this evening. Mr. Warren?
Hey, what's up? My name is, my name is Holden Warren. Little background on me, I work a lot with the A-Rabbers. I've worked here from Baltimore for a long time, off and on. I've been working on the dirt bike situation for about five years. I did a story for The Urbanite, and then I just continued to do community development work. I represent a nonprofit. I've been kind of privately working on this. We've been interviewing lots of different bikers. My friend Steve is here with me. He's one of the Twelve O'Clock Boys. I have a lot of relationships in the, in that community. I do videos with them. I, myself, I'm a photographer and a director. When we look at this situation, we have to think about things differently. This is a global movement. The Twelve O'Clock Boys have followers around the world. His website gets hundreds of thousands of hits every year, I mean, every day from France, from all over the world. This is a global phenomenon. Chino, the number one rider from Baltimore, has six hundred and fifty thousand Instagram followers. That is more than the entire home team attendance or home game attendance of the Ravens for a season. So imagine if someone like that says, hey, we're having an event in Baltimore this weekend. How many people are going to come? This is a sport that has no, that is in its birth stage. It comes from Baltimore. It is a Baltimore culture that we can take out to the world. Literally, thousands of people could come here every weekend if we had a park. We're talking about a lot of money. This is a huge industry that no one can tap into. Why? Because there's no legal space to participate. If we create the legal space, we are the first ones who will be able to monetize this. You don't think Red Bull and Monster and all these, and all these companies don't want a piece of this action? They do, but they can't get it, because they can't sponsor it because it's illegal. Chino's sponsored, and he gets flown all over the world. He's connected to Meek Mill, one of the biggest rappers going on right now. And so, what I'm saying is, we have our hand on something enormous, and this could be a potential to change the entire city. Because also, the people who ride the bikes are the people you want to have a conversation with. These are your affected eighteen-to-thirty-five-year-old youth. A lot of them are outside of the system, and a lot of them don't want to be illegal. A lot of them made bad decisions when they were eighteen or nineteen, and now they want to, you know, change their lives. And they see biking as a way out. And so, this is a place where we can have dialogue with these guys who are constantly persecuted in every facet of their life, and this is a place where they could be celebrated, and we can bring them together. I think this could really change. And also, when this money comes in, we're having these conversations about what's going to happen. When we create this park, it's important that we include the bikers not only in what the park should be, but in the money that the park is going to make. This is about giving jobs. This is about seeing that money go back into these communities. This is something that, you know, I go overseas, and people know about the bikes coming out of Baltimore. This is a reason people would come from overseas and stop in Baltimore. They're driving from New York to Washington, D.C. They're not going to stop for another cheesecake factory, but they will stop if there's something that doesn't exist anywhere else in the world. I mean, we are on something that is enormous. If we can tap into the potential of this, it could change the entire city. Talking about bringing together the East and the West, we're talking about bringing together all these different communities. The Sun paper put out, they had the poll, eighty-one percent of people who read The Sun want this dirt bike park. And so, I feel like this is the summer. We really need to take this energy and make this happen. I have connections in the community, I have connections, my friend Steve here would like to say something when I finish up real quick, and if you don't mind, just one word. And that's all. And so, I'd love to be a part of this community of, of dialogue with all of you guys. Thank you so much for coming today, and everybody coming today. And I really think if we can get together on this and we can, and be open to a new possibility, this could be something that literally changes the entire city and brings money and attention in a positive way into the city of Baltimore.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Warren. Steve, what's your last name?
Burton, Steven Burton. Hello, Councilman Welch. I want to first apologize. I'm incredibly terrified of speaking in public in front of people, never done it. I want to throw up now.
Scariest thing in the world, isn't it?
Some of the things here haven't been represented correctly or as accurate as they could. I co-founded Wild Out Willie Boys, Raise It Up Movement, every bike group out of Baltimore City, all the videos you see, I'm behind them, everything. It's just simple. We need a place to ride, and you build it, they will come. It's simple. That's, that's all we want, a place to ride. Co-produced the movie Twelve O'Clock Boys, everything. It's just, it's real simple. It's one of those things that's so simple that people say, oh, that'll never work. We simply need a place to ride, going here, there, everywhere, to this park, this state, none of that. I'm not, I'm not saying it won't work, but what we have is something unique. People come all over the United States to Baltimore to get their blessing in Baltimore, get their blessing from us, Wild Out Willie Boys, Twelve O'Clock Boys, to go, go back to their state and, you know, have these type of rights. But it's simple. We just need a place to ride, and to start, it wouldn't be dirt hills or any of that, because that's not what we do.
That's right.
You know, that's not what we do. Now, it would, it would definitely be incorporated in it for our kids, the children, everybody that want to do that, but the main problem is getting the bikes off of the street. That's to a place to ride where people can willingly do tricks and stunts. That's...
Yeah. We've already talked about a quarter-mile asphalt as, as part of the park, because that's what urban dirt bike riding's about.
Right, that's right.
And the AMA has what's known as sanctioned events. And because they're sanctioned, that's what the Red Bulls and all those other organizations look like.
I get all types of offers from...
So if we were to take the asphalt and create a sanctioned event...
Right.
Then the guys get paid.
Yep. I get all types of emails from Red Bull. Again, they, they want to do, they want to do videos, they wanted the contacts, they want the riders, all types of things, but it just has to be done the right way.
I would love us to get to the point where we could have a quarterly competition here in Baltimore and eventually host the Nationals.
That's, that's a phone call away.
Yeah.
I call one other person, the word is out. I mean, I call, I make one phone call, and two thousand, three thousand riders in Baltimore City from everywhere. It's just, it's just one of those things. I'm a longshoreman, I work every day now. I grew up in East Baltimore. I grew up riding dirt bikes, dirt bikes. The thought, the thought of dirt bikes saved my life.
Okay.
When I didn't have anything else to, to look forward to or anything else. It was the thought of always wanting, you know, to own and ride a dirt bike that, you know, gave me something to live for. Consequently, luckily, you know, I've been blessed. I got a good career now. Just trying to give back and see this ring there, you know? You say it back in two thousand, I'm here, most of these that I can make, but, you know, to make it happen, to stop all the illegal dirt bike riding, police chasing and hurting and killing, and it's illegal. I don't, I never say it's, it's right or it's good or, you know, cheer on, you know, because we breaking the law, they breaking the law, but like, I mean, look at all the other things they could be doing instead of riding and everything else. But it is wrong. But, you know, chasing kids until they kill their self is, I mean, it's their fault, they wrong, but build a place, a nice place, adequate place, and this problem will start to remedy itself.
Well, you've given back by your testimony. God bless you. I really appreciate what I've heard, and I hope we can incorporate it all as we move forward, exploring what we can do building the dirt bike park here in Baltimore City. And I'm going to ask the chairman, when we return, as he recesses this hearing, that we continue the discussion before we have any vote on, on this issue, and bring this issue, as Ms. Truheart said, into the community and access the people who are most affected, and that is the riders.
Yep. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you very... Ma'am, ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry. Gave everyone an opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, ma'am. Mr. Burton, thank you for your testimony. Baltimore City Council Recreation and Parks Committee hearing on Council Bill fifteen dash zero two five eight R is now in recess. Thank you.